United States of America, which stands for which stands one nation, one nation, under God, in the God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on the agenda is Chris, I forget it. Steve, accountability policy?
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. At a previous board meeting, this policy was up for reading and Melissa at the time raised the question about the accountability of the 90% in there. And at the time, we weren't prepared to address that. So thanks to that, we've come back, we've done a little bit of work and a little bit of research, and I'd like to bring forward the policy with some edits I did. But prior to talking about that, I'd like to share with you some information about the edits themselves. It'll take just a minute. So let me see if I can do this real quick and share my screen with you all. Let me know if you can see this. Is that viewable for everybody?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. I can't see you now because my screen's occupied with that. You can see me and you can see this. So the accountability goals, 2004 Board Policy Adopting Performance Improvement Goals are really part of Washington's ESSA consolidation plan. ESSA is an acronym for Every Student Succeeds Act, and it is the 2015 reauthorization and renaming of the previous Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which was where Nickelby came out of. ESSA is the newer and improved version that is less punitive to school systems and more flexible than Nickelby was in the use of federal funds, which was more restrictive. And when school districts were trying to address issues around state learning standards and assessments, TPEP was brand new on the scene, teacher principal effectiveness work, and then any of the student equity. Systems found that it was very, very difficult to work with that. So ESSA was the revision of that, and that is what has created what we now know to be the Washington School Improvement Framework. And in that framework, there are several measures that we get reports back from the state for every three-year, it's a three-year period of time. And you'll see that ELA and math proficiency, which is the question at hand that we're talking about, the 90% on that, and that's for grades three through eight and grades 10. And I'll get to that in a minute. There are also ELA math and math growth, high school graduation, English language progress, regular attendance, ninth graders on track, and dual credit. These are all different indicators in terms of how schools are measured under the ESSA plan. The question at hand relative to the policy, about the 90%, comes right out of Washington's consolidation plan, setting the academic targets. And these were established when the plan was put out in 2017. And as you can see, that the academic goals are designed to emphasize closing subgroup gaps in proficiency. And so they proposed establishing a 90% minimum proficiency for each subgroup for ELA and math within 10 years, which would set that target date as 2027. And then within that plan, schools and any subgroups with less than 90% proficiency need to have annual interim targets set toward reaching that goal. The other element of that is the 90% minimum expectation for graduation rate for each subgroup with the same criteria of setting those interim targets towards reaching that goal. OHS, the most recent data that we have, has an overall graduation rate of 93.6. So as a school, they have met that over the 90% graduation rate. They have two subgroups that are below 90% right now. SWD, which stands for Students With Disability, that's Chris's area of expertise, and kids who qualify under 2+ races. And those are just under 90%, but those are the two subgroups that we would continue to set goals for. We continue to try to strive towards 100% graduation. So what this boils down to, and getting back to the question that was in front of us in that meeting, is what does this look like? And the expectation is that we would set targets towards the year 90% rate at 2027. And you can see based on the 2019, the most recent ELA and math data that we have, and we'll just look at that first line there with OHS, we were at 71.9, which is 18.1% below 90%, which if we were to set a seven-year growth goal at a rate of 2.6% per year, so that the next year would be 71.9 plus 2.6% and so on. OHS math was at a 34, which is a 56% gap from the 90%. So we need a growth rate of our kids at 8% per year over the next seven years. And then you can trickle on down and see what that rate looks like for OMS, PTRPS. And now, along with this, and you'll see that this is articulated in the policy, that if we don't make that, let's just go back to the ELA target, if we don't make that 2.6% growth in the next year, then that rate has to be recalculated for the next six years so that you're still targeting that 90% growth rate. And the same would be true with all of the rest of the schools. So with that, the policy before you that has the addendums to it is, what I did with that was I tried to make a little bit more sense in the policy. So in the reading of the policy, it's actually a little bit more clear than it was. So you'll see that the updates are in red. And so we already know that as a starting point for determining annual performance improvement goals, the district in each school will use the most recently available results of the school improvement framework. That's what I just showed you. And identify the achievement gap between current performance and minimum performance expected by spring of 2027. That's an addition that wasn't in the previous policy, but that clarifies the why and the target for it. And then added another one, the annual increments are calculated by dividing the total achievement gap by the remaining years up to spring of 2027. That is kind of a rephrasing of the actual language coming right out of the Washington State Consolidation Plan. So I just used their language and then just kind of rephrased it so it would make sense for us. So the answer to the question, why 90%, it's set by the state based on our compliance with ESSA. There might be another question. There was another question, which was, is that reasonable? And I think it's an extremely challenging target. It's very possible that we might not make that target, but particularly in math, high school math, for example, we would not be alone. We did not have the SBA data last year. They haven't made an official announcement yet, but that makes me leery that we would even have the SBA test this year. So in terms of that, and that's really what establishes that target. So I don't know what OSPI is going to do with the 2027 targets and/or what they would do with the fact that there are several schools that are struggling to even come close to that 90% mark. But the reason we have it in policy is because it is based on an OSPI consolidation plan in relationship to the federal guidelines under ESSA. So with that, I'll give you a chance, I'll take a chance to breathe and give you a chance to ask any questions if you have them.
So you said that there wasn't any, there hasn't been any notification of what happens to a district should they fail by 2027?
Right.
Right? So I know way back when the No Child Left Behind, you gave it an acronym, I know it by that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they came in and kind of governed the schools themselves, the government did. I can't even remember now if it was federal or state that came in and did that, but it seems to me that if they don't change ESSA at this point, then our school districts are not going to be local. They will be headed up by the government somehow because who's going to be able to hit that?
Yeah. This particular element of the accountability goals deals with student achievement. There are, as I showed in that other graphic, and we can go back to it too because I know I went through it fairly quickly, there are multiple measures that schools are now evaluated on, and so the achievement aspect is only one aspect of that. So you also have attendance, you also have the ninth grade success, ELL success, those indicators that are in there. And so those do, those are, those actually play a part in the evaluation of the entire school and the entire school district. But there was nothing in the plan that I noticed that indicated that if we didn't hit that 90% mark, what was going to happen. But in the consolidation of those measures, when a school district does, falls below the line that they set, and they set a line for each of those indicators every three years, then there actually can be identified for additional assistance and whatnot. So you could be a district that maybe your marks on the ELA and the math are not as high as they could be, but your other, your graduation rate and some of those other things are high, and they offset that as a composite. So that's how it actually works now. As you may remember, PTR was identified as a school of support for their special ed population because that was one of the indicators in their, in all those bands that was below that threshold. And so they weren't, they were considered not a criterion one, but a criterion two. So they didn't get any money or anything for that, but we did have to work with them to establish a focus in that area. And Chris and crew have been working there, and we've seen gains on an annual basis in that area based on the focus that they have. There's a very good chance, well, what would have happened is we would have had a new report card come out with a new three-year period of time, but because we didn't do the SBA last year, and I don't know if we're going to do it this year, I don't know what's going to even happen with that new report card. It's kind of up in the air right now.
What I'd like to add is, if the political party remains in Washington DC, we can expect further information with regard to the future of US regs surrounding the public school system. Should the Democratic Party prevail, there would probably be a new Department of Education, Secretary of Department of Education. And so all of this is subject to change politically. And we are subject to those influences, of course.
Well, and to Tony's point, Washington State requested a waiver for this school year for the SBA test, and the federal, the feds, the Department of Ed denied it. And, but OSPI has not done anything with that. And I'm not much of a betting man, but I think that, I'm betting that they're waiting until after November 3rd to decide what they're going to do. Because if the administration changes, and there's a good, and if it goes democratic and there's a change in the Department of Ed, then I would assume OSPI is going to, you know, resubmit their waiver and expect a different outcome. So that's probably why we haven't heard anything about it yet.
Well, I wanted to thank you for revisiting and explaining in a way that I can fully understand where the 90% comes from and you have a book full of information there.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Melissa, because this is the Washington consolidation plan that I did not read until now, so thank you for that.
Sure, happy to pile on more work.
I probably should have read it a long time ago, but.
Yeah, it's a good homework assignment for all of us.
Yeah, you got to dig in and find out what's going on. I learned a lot, so thank you for that.
I'm glad you brought it up because I've seen the accountability goals. This is now year three, and you read it, and you're like, yes, 90%, and why would we lower that? But it didn't actually mean what I thought it meant, so I appreciated you asking the question.
Me too.
And thank you for teaching us about that. That was really helpful.
You're welcome.
I have to admit that the presentation kind of concerned me from the standpoint of, we have an excellent high school graduation rate, but 66% of our high schoolers don't meet standard on math. I mean, that, it seems a little disjointed with our graduation rate.
Well, George, I could tell you from all my years in Washington teaching that we have, we have been low, much lower in math all along, and it's been a real struggle to change that.
We're in math, we ended up, we previously weren't below the state level in math at the high school level, but we're below the state average in math, but honestly, not by much. So the state average is quite low in math. And they've, one of the things that they've done to adjust for that is, it used to be an 11th grade test. They've now moved it to a 10th grade test, and so, and which allows kids to take the 10th grade level math, SBA, and then retake it as an 11th grade if they don't, or a 12th grade if they don't. So they're eventually able to pass the SBA, a high school math test.
When did they change that?
That was two or three years ago.
So this, these 2019 numbers, that the test that only 34% met standard, that was a 10th grade level test?
Um, maybe. Yes, I think it was. Well, yes, the last time we took it, it was the 10th grade test. And you've got the combination, there's an overlap there in the, in the, when that was put into play and when it was activated. And I could, I could dig into that a little bit, George, if you'd like a little bit more information.
I'm assuming we're, as a district, we're attempting to address it. So I don't think we need to separately look at it other than what we're already doing. I just, again, I find it disheartening that the lion's share of our students, even though they graduate, failed to meet the standard on math.
If Cliff was here, he'd be, if Cliff was here right now, I would assume he'd be jumping in right now. And because one of the things that happened last year that I recognized was Cliff specifically delved into the leadership aspect around mathematics last year, and we were seeing very significant gains in what was happening in the classroom based on the instructional leadership that he was providing with the instructional coach that we were providing through our Title I funds. And the combination of those two was making quite the difference. He was very, very disappointed that we didn't do the SBA last year because we are anticipating that we would have seen completely different marks based on that, from that last year, based on the work that he and the math team had done last year. But everything got pulled in March, and then they didn't run the test, so we can always look back and say, it's only a.
Well, thank you, Steve, for that report. The next two items, Steve and Chris, you don't have to stay online because it's nothing that you have to be involved with. Bonnie, I'm sorry, you got to stay with us, but you guys go back and enjoy your dinner. You guys have a good night.
Wait, just to make sure I'm tracking, this is the first read of accountability goals, and we'll come back for approval? Or Bonnie, I saw you shake your head. Are we done?
Yes, it will be.
Yes, we got to come back on a general session.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys. Bye-bye. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Chris.
All right, the next thing we're going to discuss is the self-evaluation. Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong, we did talk to WASDA. They can do two evaluations, one in the beginning of the year and one at the end of the year. Right now, we want to decide, do we need clarification or what do we need clarification on? WASDA will cater this to our needs as ordinary school district. So basically, what do you want to change? Do you want to change anything? Do you need clarification on some items?
Does the board wish to have someone from WASDA to come up to work with the board to dig a little deeper, do a deeper dive on the self-evaluation? Or do you feel like you have sufficient information and understanding of the purpose and kinds of questions that are being asked?
Well, I believe, I know when I first got on the board, they just started, they were starting this, and WASDA came out and sat and had a discussion with us on the evaluation and answered all our questions. So I don't want, you know, we can get WASDA to come out and sit and talk with us and go over this item by item, or if you have any questions, we can get two direct people in WASDA. What is your concern about?
I brought it, I was one of the people that brought it up. I was concerned, I thought we weren't going to revisit it and see what we needed to work on, and do we, did we need to make some goals around this? And quite frankly, right now, with everything going on, it seems like small potatoes compared to everything else.
Thank you, Kathy, because that was exactly where my head was. I was just thinking, I'm, there's just too much other high importance items that we're dealing with, and we're spending a lot of time together in these virtual meetings, and I'm not exactly sure that we need to spend extra time on our self-evaluation, to be perfectly frank.
I just wanted to make sure that each year when we do it, we revisit it, see if we need to set some goals concerning it. And I was concerned because I didn't see that actually happening. And as long as we make a commitment to do that, I'm happy to just say, hey, we've got a lot on our plate.
I agree with, I agree. There's a lot of things out there we need to address. We can shelf this and bring it back. But I would definitely have WASDA, when, you know, when the times are going to get good, but definitely WASDA to come out and sit and have a talk over this. It was a good tool to use if we use it right.
Right. And just my concern, not my concern, but my concern with the evaluation is you have people in any board, you have people who've been on the board for a year or two, and you have brand new people, and we're asking them, like, do we always do this? And as a new person, you don't know, like, you don't know. And what are they really asking about? And so Stanley, in the future, I'm with Kathy and Melissa on this, I don't think this is our hot priority right now. When we do go to retake it, maybe let's take a little bit of time to talk about the topics and we might scratch some off as, you know what, not everybody's informed on this one, let this question aside. You know, I don't know, there's different ways of approaching it.
We definitely can bring it back and discuss it.
I like that idea of bringing it back, like, right before we're scheduled to take it again.
Right, and go over it. That's where your mind is fresh.
Yeah.
Nice.
Okay. We think it as a group, and we talk about it as we go through it, you know, that would be enough.
There you go, good idea.
Do it. It was for us, so there's different ways of approaching it.
All right, well, we'll shelf it and bring it back. We'll move right along to school board standards. Hey, Carrie done an excellent job on getting this work for us, so I'm going to shift it over to her, her ideas. I mean, she's done, I want to thank you, Carrie, for the work you've done at short notice.
Yeah, no problem. So what I would like to do, you guys, my hope is, I'm going to present the presentation that I sent to you, and I know there's a few of you, I know Kathy, George, you had some feedback, but let's just go through it, and I'll make any changes that we agree on live. And so hopefully, when we're done discussing it, we can have something to go with, and then we can always revisit this next year or however soon the board wants to revisit it. But let's work in the changes and kind of put this to bed. I think it'll be helpful for us as we do the superintendent search. So I thought, or this one too, but I thought it might be helpful to have that.
Carrie, there was one overarching thing that I had wanted to ask before you went over it, and that was, when I read through it, some of it were like norms or principles, but some of it was like procedures, which I think we do need to address, but I think we should separate those two things.
Okay.
A section on, you know, like, our norms or principles, and then some of the things that address procedures that aren't spelled out in our policy that, you know, like, I remember the three of, Melissa, you and I standing in Bellevue going, so how do you get something put on the agenda? And it wasn't, you know, and it was, so just a simple statement about some of those procedures that could be spelled out. That was my overarching question.
Cool. I like grouping teams, that's good feedback, and I can definitely rearrange them into kind of norms, how we do things, and then a little more procedure, operational stuff.
Before we start, hey, Carrie, do we need Bonnie?
Great question. I don't think so. Bonnie, you're cool, I'll just send you the results.
I'm excused from the meeting?
You're released. Good night.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, guys. Hey, somebody, will somebody text me and tell me what time you wrap up?
Yes, we'll have Tony do that.
I'll do that.
Thank you very much. Have a great.
Okay, have a nice night. Have a good dinner. Bye-bye.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and I'm going to be kind of ruthless to keep us on track. And then, of course, if there's anything you think of after the meeting, we can, we can work that in, but I'm going to edit on the fly, and you, I won't be able to see you once I send things, so you'll have to just speak up if you have thoughts. Yep.
Right at the beginning, I thought it would be really great if you put in the WASDA chart that says, school board governs, superintendent, manages, and the list of things underneath. That was in several of the other examples.
I'm still in the meeting.
In the WASDA, and I thought, you know, because that really spells out a lot of things right there.
Yeah, the reason, so I'll, maybe I'll explain some of my thought process through this. One of the kind of filters that I use, if this content exists someplace else, then it doesn't belong in our standards, because we always have, we already have it as reference material. And that chart, Kathy, I think is super helpful, but it exists in our, you know, board training materials. So I thought having it in one place is better than having it in multiple places. That was my thought process, but I'm open to your feedback.
Well, I was just thinking that it was a good way of explaining concisely why the particular choices and norms.
Okay. Everybody know what chart we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, what are, what's the rest of the groups? Would you like it in here also?
I don't see any reason why it couldn't be in there.
Okay.
I do have a, just a overall question. What is the intended purpose of the document?
Stanley, do you want to take that one?
Basically, the overall intended document is to set rules and regulations how the board will operate among themselves, because there's nowhere this is written, how we should do things. We're trying to get things, this is how we do it and why we do it. Actually, the whys.
Right. Yeah, that's how I view it also. You know, I feel like as a board, we do a pretty good job communicating, but I look at this as, okay, down life's road, you get a few more new board members. It's helpful to have reference, like, something to look back on and to, even if there's conflict, to refer back to this and say, okay, are we still following our principles? You know, it's a behavior guide, it's a process guide, it's. You know, it, it's a behavior guide, it's a process guide, it's.
Basically, not to cut you off, Carrie, basically the guy, when we get new board members on, they have something they could reference to. It's how the board works, this is what we do, because, I don't know, with you guys, when I first got on, it was nothing to say, okay, what, what do we do as a board? How we do it? How does everything works?
So, well, that, that's one of the things that, that I had reached out and chatted with Carrie about, that she said, let's, let's bring this up to the whole board. The issue that I have with that basic principle is the rules that govern the board are delineated by the state of Washington, their laws.
Yeah.
Any self-governance that we choose to imply resides strictly with the board member who is sitting there. So we can't create a document that says this, this is how the board shall run and then expect people to just accept that when they're elected to the board. Because that's not the laws that govern boards, and there are actual RCWs.
Yeah.
You know, those are what they commit to when they run for the board.
Yeah, I think this, this is one of those things that you would revisit annually and recommit to. Um, and it's basically looking at each other, saying, okay, is this, are these our guidelines for working together? And do we all agree with them, or do we need to modify them? You know, it's not something that's and it's really up to the members to uphold it.
So can I, can I, um, one of the reasons I thought that this was important for us to do is that towards the, um, I guess, the beginning and then the end of when Marcy Shepherd was here and some of those board meetings. To, for all intents and purposes, we appeared to others to be completely dysfunctional and not operating cohesively or with respect for not only one another, but for the staff of our district. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I kind of thought that that was the place that this was coming from and why we felt like having an operating principles document would be advisable. And I know that things, even though times are worse right now, I know that we've gathered together as a group and we're much more functional. But to have something to refer to, I don't, I don't know. If, if my thought process is off, that's just kind of where I thought it was coming from and why we would want it, not necessarily for the RCWs.
Right.
Well, Carrie, go ahead, let's go ahead and go over it, you know, we, we can decide, but let's, let's, let's see what you got.
Okay. All right, so so far I do have, um, just buying, you guys would appreciate the chart being added, so I can definitely add that in. Um, so the first one that came up, oh, obviously, we looked at all of these districts. And this is a summary of the principles, so now we'll go through just kind of each one. And there's this idea that students come first and children come first. The board represents the needs and interests of each student. And I think you had some thoughts on this one.
I did. I'm a literal person. The board represents the community. We represent the interests of the taxpayers, the people who elect us. You know, it's a representative democracy. We, we actually represent the people who put us here. I would hope that their needs and interests match those of the students. But we're representatives of the community, governing.
So what kind of change would you recommend?
It can even just be changing the word represents, because like I said, I'm a literal person. You know, the board will consider the needs and the interests of each student, what, whatever you want it, but if we're gonna use the word represents, that, that's actually who puts us here, and that's the community.
What if you added at the end, each student and the community? Or each student within the community?
Well, again, it's, it's not the student, because students aren't taxpayers. We represent, the, the word represents, I mean, we are, we are elected to represent our constituents.
What about prioritizes? The board prioritizes the needs and interests of.
I love that.
Yep, yep, I like that.
Melissa, Stanley, thoughts on that?
Perfect to me. Yep.
Can you guys see, you can see my screen, you see me making the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that work for you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Nice. Good job. Next one talks about governance and, um, just my little commentary, which I get the privilege of commentary when I put this together. There are boards that do not practice governance and they get involved in, um, you know, leadership of staff and operational decisions within the district. And I, I feel like our strength has been being a, a, um, board that practices governance. So where I landed after reading the input from other districts is that we will practice responsible governance. Um, we will provide reasonable governance, you know, basically focused on planning, policymaking, accountability, and communication. And we will not become involved in the management of schools.
I like, I like that.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. Cool. Hello? And the other one is about goals, and I know this is a topic that was important to all of us. Um, where I landed was, we will set clear goals. And the board will set clear goals for themselves. The superintendent and the district expectations for student learning will be high because of our belief that all students can learn and improve regardless of existing circumstances and resources.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
So just to be clear, when we say the, we'll set expectations of the district, or we'll have goals for the district, we're talking like the district office, not individual schools, because that would be in conflict with our previous slide.
I was just going to mention that, we could have the goals for ourselves and the superintendent, but do we really get down to the nitty gritty of having it for the district? Or is that part of operations?
Um, to me, the goals roll up to the district. That's how I, that, who's above the district?
Well, Tony, what's your take on that? Because to be honest, the previous slide said, we're gonna stay out of your lane. So I would really defer to you on this one. When we say we're gonna set goals for you and separately the district, are we staying out of your lane or are we, are we treading into the superintendent's space there?
Well, I, I, just a suggestion, you could say something like, the board will set clear goals for themselves, the superintendent, and approve each school's improvement plan.
I, 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 yeah, that, that seems.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep, yep.
Like a government thing.
I like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
You bet.
Approve each school's.
School improvement plan, the school's improvement plan. S, SIP.
I don't want to use an acronym.
Okay.
Because.
But if we use SIP, then we can pretend like each of the schools get to drink.
Yeah, right. Only because, you know, one of our goals is that new hires will also be able, or not new hires, listen to me sounding like, whatever.
Is the school improvement plan a real thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
That's what I was just about to say, George.
Each school.
Capital S, capital I, capital T.
Um, one, one example of a district goal that occurred to me as I was typing this is, for example, hiring and retention goals. That would be a district goal that, would we set that goal or would that be a superintendent goal?
I would think that would be a superintendent goal.
Okay.
Or their evaluation would be.
The evaluation is about that, yeah.
But that's been presented to us. Do we vote on it?
Oh, good question. No, we don't.
And so it's just presented to us?
Yeah. It's a departmental goal.
But couldn't we, when we're talking about the superintendent's goals and, and what we want, does that not, because when we're talking about, we want communication, we want that transparency from the district to the people, that falls, that falls under the superintendent's leadership to make sure that that.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a superintendent thing. That'd be in his job description.
So we. And departmental plans all under that too?
What was that?
What? Sorry, like departmental plans?
I would think so. If we have a significant plan that we see as a priority for the district, that's what we, you know, set the clear goals for the superintendent. You know, we, we want to see hiring and retention improved by, you know, this is the metric. We lay those out for the superintendent and then the superintendent delivers on those.
And that's why we would be, that, that information would be shared with us so that we are keeping abreast of what is happening.
Yes.
According to their management.
Okay.
So what do you think about what we're saying, Tony? Because you've been there.
Well, I, um, I have just written down something just to share with you. I say, performance recs, performance expectations for staff instruction and student learning will be attainably high because of our belief that all students can learn and improve regardless of existing circumstances and resources. I think that making a statement about performance expectations for staff instruction and student learning will be attainably high. That's what we're about. Staff instruction and student learning. And that, you know, you may have, have other areas to, to bring that in, but I, but not knowing the full extent of, of these governing rules or governing priorities, uh, I thought that, that might be something you, you blend in somewhere else if not here.
I actually really like that wording, Tony. I think that's really befitting what we want to see here in Ording. And I also like that it would be set in a document that gives clear vision to whoever takes your seat after you to know that this is what, you know, that we're looking for as well, that there would be no surprises. Not that anybody would think anything less, but I like that the way that that was stated very well.
And it seems to me like that is a goal for us. So it seems like.
And I like the balance between, we're not just abandoning high student achievement, but we're expecting performance improvement from our staff to go along with that.
Yes.
So Tony, please, one more time, performance expectations?
For student, for, for staff instruction and student learning will be attainably high because of our strong belief that all students can learn and improve regardless of existing circumstances and resources.
Oh, that makes that very strong. I like that.
Okay. Very good. I, I'm thinking, guys, thoughts on making this one a two bullet?
Yeah. Because there's so much in it. I think it would be better as two.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a little more powerful. Everybody good?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is the whole idea that we act as one and not as individuals and that the board president is our spokesperson. So we act as one body. Individual board members do not have authority. Actions and decisions rest with the full board. Once a decision is made by the board, we will support that decision in word and action, though we may not agree with the decision. And the board president or designated is the spokesperson. This one, I think, is actually covered a little bit in policy, the fact that we act as one, but I think we need to be in this mindset and philosophically, it's important to be aligned.
I think.
My observation on, on this particular piece is that this board does a very good job with that already. And that's, 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 that's something that you all have been doing very well.
Cool.
I have some questions on this one. The bullet point, the second bullet point where it talks about the board president being the designated board spokesperson. So if I go back to the first bullet point and I say, okay, I hate, we will support that decision in word and action. Acting as a board member, I would not support it in word because I'm not the spokesperson or the board president or his, or his or her designated is. And then as far as action goes, our only action is governance. So what would, I, I don't know when we say in word and action, what that means.
When somebody asks you.
Is that you would, you know, are, is an individual board member saying things in public and behaving in such a way that works incongruently with the decision that's been arrived at? That's what that means.
Okay, so if a board member is in public, you know, buying a loaf of bread from the store and somebody says, hey, what's going on with this? I heard the board just approved this, and you said, yes, the board just approved that. And they ask for your opinion on it. You withhold your opinion if it's contrary.
Oh, I, I, I'm not gonna, uh, uh, deal with that hypothetical. I'm just saying that in your capacity as a board member.
But in my capacity as a board member, if I'm not the board president, I shouldn't be commenting on board business.
Probably not.
So the only capacity I.
Say something, like, if we've all agreed, we're going to, we've all agreed, we're gonna hire a new communication director, and you're in the community buying your loaf of bread, you know, either denying that or saying that's a terrible idea or, you know, rolling your eyes and dismissing it as stupid, like, that would be something contrary to, okay, we've made this decision to move forward together and and you're, you're kind of, that would be an action with being a board member, I think.
Okay, so, um, see, I could see things like, we had a disagreement on the contract for the, the superintendent's search company. We then came up to the next board meeting after it was voted and passed. And the, the search company said, I understand, we have some questions on the contract. At which point I said, I believe the board, board voted on that and the contract's approved. So it really doesn't, there's no reason to speak further about it. I could see that as being an example of staying within the context of the board's approval when representing the board at a meeting. I mean, the way this could be interpreted as an example is if, if there's a levy that comes up and you disagree with it and for some reason, you, you think it's the wrong thing to do. To support it in word, does that mean you have to advocate for it? To support it in action, does that mean you're required to vote for it?
I don't think, I, and, I could be wrong.
I don't think this. I don't think this, yeah, I don't think it has anything to do with how you vote.
I can. Yeah. What were you gonna say, Melissa?
I just kind of, I just kind of feel that, um, one of the things that resonated me very, very early on, and it might've even been in my interview, um, when I was being interviewed for taking over after, um, the district five rep left. But one of the things that was asked of me is even if there's a difference of opinion, um, and we're going to have many of those and some of our votes, although we haven't seen it yet, I could see it getting to a three to two vote over some things. So majority wins. That's the one body. It's not that everybody agrees. And what is wrong with, if somebody approaches me at the grocery store and says, hey, what in the heck is going on with this? I can't believe you guys. You know, is this how you really feel? What is wrong with me saying, you know, we all have differing opinions, um, but the end result was, is that we all agreed on this action and I support that action that we conducted out one, one voting process, you know, and one, one body. But, I mean, I, I don't know. Am I, um, I, I get, I get what George is talking about, especially now because temperatures are heated. Everybody has a different opinion and but as long as we are acting as the one body, that the majority and we support the decision, whatever it comes up with, even if I didn't agree with it, as long as we support the action of the district, isn't that what this is supposed to entail?
Absolutely. When I'm representing the board, I, I can agree with it entirely. I just disagree with the statement that we're always representing the board.
Well, I think it's, it's healthy for a, a board member outside of a board meeting when asked, well, how do you feel about that decision? And if you voted publicly, um, not in support of the final decision, you can say, I, you know, I, I, I disagreed with the decision, uh, at the meeting and I had some issues with it. I think that, that you're free to do that. But, you know, anything further than that, I think would be, uh, would create agitation.
Well, and, uh, and I think anything further than that, you're trying to represent the board again. So I, I, I just wanna, I, I said early on, I'm very literal.
Yeah.
So if I vote in favor of this, if I say, yes, I support this, then I'm actually adding a layer of governance that doesn't currently exist to my action. And I will hold myself accountable to meeting them. And that's why I asked, what's the intent of this? Because if I'm, if I, I'm not gonna violate a rule that I helped put into place knowingly. And so I want to know, or if I go to the store, just like Tony just said, and they say, well, you know, what do you think about this? I noted you voted against it. Well, I voted against it, but that's what the board decided. And, you know, as long as three board members vote on it, that rule's adopted. Now, I, I don't.
And that's what I'm saying as, as a board, as a board member, and, and we voted on something and you disagree with it, but it passed. You have, are you gonna, you know, don't badmouth, as a board, we supported this. The board supported this because, you know, A Y Z, but it was supported by the board.
Right. And I, I can live with that, that, that statement, but the, the unsurety is what does it, for me was what did we mean by inward and action? Because as. I strongly disagree with, uh, and I don't. But we've, we've talked about maybe it's time for a technology levy. And if I strongly disagreed with it, even if we vote to run it as a board, I'm still gonna wave signs if I just have a strong opinion about it in opposition to it. I'm going to, to exercise my First Amendment rights anyway. I'm going to vote against it. And that, and to me, when you say word and action, voting is a very deliberate action.
What if I took out word and action? Because to me, I'm in favor of less words and.
As long as it, I'm okay with word and action staying in as long as everybody understands the box that, that, that actually fits in. I'm just not.
Your, your, your vote is secret ballot. You vote the way you vote. We don't know what you vote, yeah or nay.
But if I.
For us to have different views.
Verbally, or if I accept this level of governance, Stanley, regardless of whether my vote's a secret ballot, my integrity is not measured by what I do when you know what I'm doing. It's measured by what I do when you don't know. And so if I have committed to a particular action, I'm going to follow that action through. So if I accept a particular rule, whether you see me or not, I'm still going to live by that rule.
Yeah. So, so guys, let's move on to the next one, but I just wanna, so leave inward and action? Or George, would you feel better if we pulled that?
I'm fine with it left in. I, I believe everybody's aware of, we now talked about what it means. And it doesn't mean that you have to seek in support of something in public. You just don't badmouth it.
So George.
You could say, I voted a particular way and that's, I thought it was the right thing to do. The board voted opposite and so that's what we're doing.
So George, would you feel better if we took it up?
No, because I believe everybody has said the same thing now. We have, we have defined what word match can mean.
Yeah, cause he, he was just looking at that definition. It's defined, we have another slide?
Yeah, let's keep going. Let's keep going. I think we have a shared understanding on this one. And you guys, this isn't like written in stone. Like next year, if we come up with a better way to do this, maybe we'll experience, you know, a couple of examples of where we didn't all vote in alignment. Can I, this?
Can I, uh, ask one more thing in regards to acting as one body? Um, and I know it's in our policies as well. So it's not necessarily reflected here, but today was kind of a prime example for me when we had, um, emails, all of the emails that were coming through. And I know that I was, I got a couple of them that I saw were just for me and I felt comfortable replying to those. Um, just acknowledging the receipt of the email, but the ones that are coming to groups, um, I'm not seeing a, a reply. And so, um, Stanley, at this time being our board president as the board spokesperson, if that communication is going back out to those people, we shouldn't be getting emails back that say, nobody's responding or what have you. So what is, where does that particular part of acting as one body come in? I don't want to step on anybody's toes by replying to messages when I know my policy states that the board president or designated is going to do so. But then I don't want to be filleted because I am not, um, responding. I'm not acknowledging these communications that are coming through.
You know, you bring up an excellent point, Melissa, and I, I do kind of the same thing as you. If it comes to all five of us, I assume it'll be handled by Stanley because he is our voice. Um, if it comes to me directly, I don't consider it a board communication as much as it's one of my constituents or one of the people who will decide whether or not I retain this position, reaching out to me individually. So I will respond to anything that comes to me individually, but I do not respond to things that come to all five of us because I assume that's asking for a board position. And that is not my place.
And some of these, 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 like the one of the day that we hadn't responded to yet, I hadn't talked to Tony yet to find out the information was credible. You know, he said he'd done all this research and when Eatonville was in school, well, that's not true.
Actually, it's, it looks like they're gonna shut back down, but it is true that they.
They, they, they released a letter on, on October 3rd saying they would have to go back to, uh, the learning they was having, whatever. It's just things like that. You got to, you got to find out, you want to be complete. You gotta go do your research. Cause he's saying this and this and this. Well, you can't just respond and say, well, no, it's not true. And you gotta find out the research. You gotta find what happened.
I completely understand Stanley and the amount of emails that have been received lately. I'm totally, right? I know it's gonna take time. I would expect you to get information before replying. I just want to make sure that, I guess, making sure I'm not, um, acting outside of this one body philosophy we're putting out here by doing what I'm doing. And that is, you know, replying, replying if it's just to me and I'm not providing any information. I'm just thanking people for their voice and their time and their heart. So, um, and should I be including you in those replies then furthermore?
Would be wise to include the board if you reply to, if the email's sent just to you and you reply to it.
We can.
You might want to send to the board.
Meeting.
Yeah, then we're, we're in a meeting. I, you guys.
Only if you answer the email.
Well, that, but we were just talking about answering.
That's what we're talking about. So like, I, we got slammed by Teresa today.
If she replied to an email that somebody sent to her, she replying to it and C C all of us. If all of us don't get on and reply back, it's not a meeting. It's information. We would have to reply back to her. Then it'd become a meeting. She's just giving us information.
Well, what I've been doing is thanking them and then I say, I'm going to send the email on to Tony and you, Stanley. And then it's up to you guys to share it then.
And we, and we do, once we get it, we, we researched it. Either Tony or myself, I answered, but Tony goes back and you gotta get the data. You gotta be appropriate because you want to make sure you're answering the questions right. Cause if you're like you say, Eatonville was in, you say Eatonville's in school, we go back, no, 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 no. Then you have, then you have this back and forth and, and this problem.
Right.
You know, I, in terms of that.
I want to let the people know in my response that I am sending it on, that I am not sitting on. That's why I include that.
Okay. Okay, so.
Tony, you were gonna say something, I believe. You started to talk.
Well, I was going to say that, um, there are people that are, um, um, are making attacking, uh, hostile remarks. And, um, I'm not about to, um, attempt to counter, uh, their hostile remarks or the, the facts as they see them. Um, I'm not gonna get in a spitting match with them in writing. I, I will acknowledge that they have, their, uh, comments have been read. Uh, but I'm not gonna get in a spitting match with them because, you know, a person convinced against their will is of the same opinion still. And so I leave them alone. I'm not going to, I am not thinking that I have the skills to convince people differently as a, uh, as what initiated their, uh, response. And so there will be ti, there will be times that I don't respond. Um, and if they're attacking, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to respond. Maybe just acknowledge, thank you very much for your email and sharing your opinion. Done. I don't have the time to get into these, these, um, uh, emails that are 10 inches long. And that's been my, that's the way I've operated everywhere I've gone. And, uh, that's just the way I will continue to be. I'm not going to get into a spitting match with people because I can't convince them. I don't have the time to try to convince them.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend trying to convince people of anything. But I, I will say that, that hearing them, acknowledging that you understand that they're, they're coming from, from, or coming at it from a place of, of concern, which I, I have to say, concern, most of our parents should probably be concerned given the performance of their students at school right now. So, I mean, I can understand why they're upset. I, I, but you're right, you can't convince them. But you can certainly acknowledge, you know, you understand the concerns they have.
Yeah, I just, I just got one that the person, uh, released twice in their, the body of their email, uh, is asking me to step down and not, uh, continue, uh, in my role. Uh, if I, uh, we maintain this, the present position. I'm not, I'm not gonna respond to that person.
I wouldn't either.
I can completely appreciate everything you just said, Tony. And, um, honestly, I, I thank you for that. I've always been the person who believes that, um, just a, a quick reply and thank you for your email is vitally important. But in your role right now and some of the stuff that you're dealing with, um, I can respect where you're coming from as well and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, you guys. What do we do with the, do we need to make any changes to this?
No, no, we agree, we all agreed with this one.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I still, like Stanley, if you're not gonna respond, if you want to punt to one of us and designate someone to respond to emails, uh, I do think we do need to be responsive and we've committed to that communication. Um, so we've all got slammed with a bunch of emails, but I think we can get some quick responses out.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so we just tabled the self-evaluation conversation, but the next topic is all about continuous improvement , um, for the board, meaning we don't stand in place. We're always in a learning mindset. And so what I came away with is that we commit, um, ourselves to continuous improvement through board retreats, self-evaluation, training, networking opportunities.
You know, Carrie, if I could add, um, every time I write the word board and district, I treat it as a proper noun rather than a common noun. And so I capitalize it.
Okay.
And so that would be maybe one suggestion. I, I want to give the respect to the term board with a capital B. And then the same is true for when we mentioned the district, it's a capital D, proper noun compared to common noun.
Yes, I actually, Tony, I was inconsistent and went through an uppercase and now we'll go back through and make them uppercase.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll make that change. Any other thoughts on this one, you guys?
No, I like this one.
Okay. That puts ownership on us to get out there and listen to other people. I like that. Um, this is the no surprises one. That was pretty consistent in, I think, all of the samples. And we've got this category about communicate. Um, to encourage open communication, trust and respect between the board and staff, the board will limit surprises to the superintendent and staff. The superintendent and staff in turn will limit surprises to the board.
I actually feel this is perfect and this was one thing I think we do pretty well. I thought.
Yep. Any changes?
Nope.
No, and I, and I have to say, Tony, with your weekly meetings with us, this has really, really helped because we know what's going on. So thank you.
Yep, yep, agreed.
Well, and vice, vice versa.
Yeah. Um, so again, communications, this was a long section. Um, so there's quite a bit in here, but when I distilled it down, I was able to summarize it because less words is better always. Um, we strive for mutual understanding and I think we just demonstrate in that. Um, so I liked that one. We support each other constructively and courteously. And we maintain confidentiality. We focus discuss, discussions on issues, keeping our tone and demeanor professional. We encourage debate in differing points of view. And we embrace accountability, communication and transparency. I added that in there because it did a good job of capturing some of the other ideas. Um, and also when I look at, when I look at things like principles, I want to make sure it's something that we live by. And I feel like we do a pretty good job doing this. And I felt that if we had new board members, I would want them to be good at this as well. So.
So Carrie, Carrie, could I suggest something here? I, I think it's, it's all good, but, um, as you know, we, we started the, uh, act accountability, collaboration and transparency.
Oh, yeah.
Saying that as a board, that you, the board embraces that initiative, I think that goes a long way.
I meant collaboration.
Yeah, instead of communication, maybe collaboration. And again, maybe it is, you know, you put, then you might even put the, uh, the acronym in parentheses, uh, ACT.
Okay.
Okay.
Good segue.
Proper noun of a program that we're using, the Accountability, Collaboration and Transparency metric program, whatever it is, and again, that would be capitalized, capitalized official name of the program.
Yep. Cool. Anything, any changes, different words?
Nope, I like it.
Okay. Um, then there was all kinds of stuff on meetings. And our meetings are, those are one of the things that, that's governed by Public Meetings Act and rules and all kinds of stuff. So I just said, we really want, want to be effective. So we will prepare in advance. Um, and we will be efficient, effective and avoid exceptionally long meetings. So that means submitting questions to the superintendent in advance and allowing time for responses to be gathered and shared with all board members.
Looks good.
Okay. And this is kind of one of those things like expectations for new board members, like you gotta do your homework and be prepared.
So as a curiosity on this, um, how do we manage with kind of last minute agenda changes? Cause I noticed in the last couple of board meetings we've had, things have changed in the last day or so. So the first time we were seeing it was really when we were on the call.
Yeah, actually, Tony, I had a question related to that. That happened to me. Um, because I got through my board doc stuff, you know, a week ahead of time, which is unusual for me, but I missed, I missed something and does Bonnie load those? I think in the past I've gotten an alert that says, yeah, your document's been loaded, but I don't always get them.
Well, I can talk with Bonnie about that. Um, but, uh, the last, the last, uh, the last couple of meetings that we've had, there's been some last minute kinds of shakeups where we modified the agenda and, and, uh, haven't been able to, I've been able to communicate with, with Stanley, but not the rest of the other board members on the reasons why and so forth.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of happened.
That we would be extended a little grace if we ask questions, significant questions at the time of. Um, I know we try to shy away from any substantive questions if I haven't posed them in advance.
Yeah, and I expect that that's gonna happen. I really, I mean, that's gonna happen. That's just part of business and things come in and change at the last minute. I would just like to get an alert ahead of time before I click on that section during the meeting and it's like, what? So.
Yeah, that, that should happen. You know, one, the one thing I can say is that, uh, I had one experience, uh, in a school district, um, that the, uh, board president loved to, um, withhold really, really hard questions that were complex and not share them with the superintendent. And would ask those questions and it would be, it was, I gotcha. It was a surprise in front of the full public. And she did it, meeting after meeting after meeting, and the former superintendent shared with me. He said, Tony, the board president's going to do this to you. She's done it to me and this is what's, why it's happening. She wants to make herself look good as she's, uh, preparing for a board meeting. And, uh, she wanted to run for public office beyond the school board as well. And, uh, and that was really hurtful and it caused the, the, uh, team, the cabinet members to poorly respond because they didn't have enough time to research completely, uh, to, uh, answer the board member's question. And so, um, as long as there's, you know, uh, some time to, uh, uh, give an advanced notice to the superintendent about a tough question, that was, that's always appreciated. But, uh, this particular person made it a habit and it was, uh, it was mean spirited. Um, to the former superintendent.
That, Tony, I, I hope that you will just say, well, Director Kennerberg, you know, for a question like this, generally we like to see it come in advance. I will be happy to research it and share the information when I have it.
Um, yeah.
Because I don't expect you to answer all the tough questions necessarily. I'd rather answer them right in time than quit.
You're, you're much, yeah, you're much more kind than she was. Let me tell you.
Nice. Yeah, I figure anything we ask in the meeting already has the asterix of, you know, we'll get back to you when we have the information. I would prefer that over getting misinformation.
Sure.
So, all right, so we're good on this one?
Yes.
Hey.
Looks good.
Yep.
Um, there was a bunch of stuff on executive sessions and my, I felt that, I'll, I'll back up. I felt like, um, these were, you know, about confidentiality and appropriate subjects and, um, you know, when and why we can have executive meetings and that's already governed. That's already decided for us. So if we just abide by the rules, we would cover these comments. So my suggestion for executive sessions is that we exclude a special topic on, on executive sessions. Are you guys okay?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Side question on this, with the current way that we conduct our board meetings and executive sessions in a remote situation. Previously, if we were on, all in the same building, everybody would leave or we would go to another location, however that looked. And, and there was obviously privacy. Now that we are in our homes with our computers in wherever, do we need to address something about that in, in this time? I mean, um, if I had my laptop downstairs in the dining room with my husband in the next room and we had an executive session, that might not necessarily be confidential at that point if he is able to listen in this manner. I, not that I want to borrow trouble, but.
No, you make a good point, Melissa, because I, I go off into a, an area where I should have relative privacy. But even if I lock doors, my kids find ways to open doors and come running through rooms. You know, again, it's our best effort. I can, you know, point towards the door and, and shoo them out. Um, so they may hear a snippet, but they'll never hear the meeting. Um, but yeah, that is, that is a trickier proposition.
Yeah.
You could say something like, you know, um, uh, every board member will, will, um, secure their, uh, computer while working at, uh, conducting virtual meetings at home. You know, it could be something as simple as a statement that the board was, each board member will strive to, uh, maintain a, a secure, um, uh, computing device, uh, while conducting executive sessions in their private residence. Could be something like that or not, nothing at all. Can't hear you, Melissa.
Sorry. I would say, I was noticing Carrie went back to the effect of board meetings and maybe you could just put that there instead of having a whole different, um, executive session slide. If that's a good one, but I, I don't know.
But I'm gonna check with Wazda. They might have a policy that came out that since you were at home because you can't control. Like I don't have, have open, open space, so.
Yeah.
Goes in, she goes out, she can hear what goes on. I can't control, you know, stay in the room until I'm done.
Yeah.
That's a good idea to check with Wazda, although, you know, none of this affects me because my dog really doesn't repeat things, so.
Yeah.
Not yet.
And I'm sure there's a link about that somewhere though.
I'm literally at the kitchen table because if I go up to the office, my internet craps out.
Just a little note that says the board will strive to maintain, uh, secure environment during executive session.
Kind of work for now until we, we get the clarification.
Let's see. I don't like the word.
You could use endeavor too.
Yeah.
Make every effort.
Do their darnedest.
That's right. That makes sense too.
Or let's be real and put damnedest.
Confidential. How to protect.
Did you make a joke about me, George?
Kathy, I never make jokes about people behind their back. I always do it right in front of them.
Oh, I thought I heard my name.
I said darnedest.
There you go. Good one, Carrie. That happened.
Does that work?
That'll work.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good comment, Melissa. Thank you.
Maybe you could say in our virtual meetings conducted in our homes.
Our virtual.
Confidential information.
How about just period?
Virtual meetings conducted in our homes.
How about just virtual?
Home offices.
Because I've done meetings in my car, I've done meetings in my other places.
Virtual meetings is the place to end it.
Yeah.
Yes, there you go.
Okay.
Good one, George.
Thank you. Good. Been a pay. So, executive board meetings, decision making. Um, we already have some guidelines, like the district has guidelines around decision making that we've talked about a thousand times. But I thought unique to us would be that we would consider research, best practice, public input and financial impacts. Identify and evaluate alternatives when available, resolve problems as close to the point of origin as possible. Gather input from all stakeholders when possible. Evaluate the effectiveness of decisions when appropriate. Um, that means like going back, like we might've decided something last year and we need to revisit that this year. Something changed. Um, clearly communicate decisions that are made. Manage agreement with positive attention to assumptions to avoid making decisions based on false assumptions. I thought that was good.
I, you might, you might reword it some way. I, it was kind of.
A twister?
I think maybe move, remove the first assumption. Manage agreement with positive attention to avoid making decisions based on false assumptions.
That, that fixes it for me. Thank you.
Excellent. Good. Oops. To avoid, okay. And then individually and collectively publicly support decisions. That's kind of redundant.
It's, it's redundant and it's more, it's more stringent than what we put above because individually, you need to publicly support decisions.
Yeah.
Acting as a board member.
If you guys are okay with it, I'll delete this one and I feel like the other one.
Yep.
Okay. Other things that should be in our decision making, you know, scope that we want to put in here.
Covers the principles of it.
Okay. This one, I almost didn't put this one in here because I feel like, you know, the problems, we would pass that to Tony instead.
I kind of agree with that comment, Carrie. It feels like that becomes part of the operations and the management of the district.
Yes, I was just about to say that.
Okay.
On the first, on the first bullet, Carrie, you could, you could say, um, best practices, indeed plural, practices.
Always the English teacher.
No one practices more than once, Dr.
Okay, so I deleted the resolving issues close to the source. Um, and added best practices and we killed the last bullet. I like the idea of reevaluating decisions because we don't have to make, you know, it's not permanent, we can always reevaluate. Um, I think one thing we may have fell short on in previous years is communicating all the decisions. Sometimes we just made decisions and moved on.
Oh, I know what you could do there. I'm sorry, Carrie, but reevaluate the effectiveness, effectiveness of program decisions. Or decisions and programs when appropriate. That's one thing that sometimes gets in motion at every school district I've been where a program gets installed at $50,000 and there's no evaluation on its effectiveness.
Oh, thank you. As a teacher, that will always frighten.
You know, and people are going, well, it just kind of feels good, you know?
Yep.
Uh, I, I think it kind of, uh, you know, it fills the gap. Well, does it make a difference in? Well, anyway.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea because, you know, as we revisit this, because you don't do these things without revisiting them, that'll prompt us to go, okay, have we looked at our programs and considered whether or not they're having the impact we intended? So I like adding that. Any other ideas on this one?
Well, um, it's a little small, uh, um, punctuation thing. I think when you're going in bullets, uh, up and down, at the end of each statement, it's going to be a semicolon until you get it to the very last one and then it's a period.
Actually, there's no punctuation at the end of a bullet.
Yeah, you're correct. Unless it's a complete sentence.
No, Nellie, go. Nellie, go.
Okay.
I'm not doing.
It's all, it's all a matter of style.
I have an aversion to semicolons.
Would you like me to go get my big manual from, on writing?
No.
This is called wordsmithing à la maximum.
Normally I am all for proper punctuation, Tony. Do you know me?
I am.
And is vicious. I'm gonna, I'm gonna spare us that one. Okay.
All right.
Um, so this next part is about, um, I don't know, engaging the community. I can't read anymore. It's late. Uh, oh, so more decision making. So we want to also collaborate with, okay, so let me back up just a hair. So in this one, we said we're going to gather input from all stakeholders. So continuing, we want to collaborate with families and community members responding to diverse interests and needs and mobilize community forces when needed.
Maybe, maybe we need to call this something other than decision making, something like community relations.
And seek to understand opposing viewpoints and solicit input from staff and subject matter experts. I'm not opposed to that change. What about that? So we kind of changed the topic a little bit. It's a little more community relations.
Um, I would probably, instead of solic, saying that we solicit, solicit input from subject matter experts, um, I would probably just put, um, partner with superintendent to make sure, you know, he's aware, he or she's aware of, of any conversations we're having. Because obviously we're not going to go, I, I, I would never go outside a district for a subject matter expert. I would take it to Tony and say, hey, Tony, this is what I'm hearing. Can you run it to ground for me? Um, I would always go right back to the superintendent. And if we state subject matter expert, and that's really his job to. And if we'd state subject matter expert, and that's really his job to, to pull in whoever in the district is most appropriate to answer the question.
What if we?
I was gonna say, what if we just, it says solicit, put share so that if we read something, then we're sharing it? And then the decision is up to.
Whatever. Um, I get where you guys are going. Um.
And maybe it doesn't belong in this one at all anymore. Because if we're, if we're doing more of a community relations field, you know, seeking to understand opposing viewpoints, you know, that would be community. But then if we go back up to de- decision making, we are, we already had a bullet in there that talked about.
Yeah.
Feedback.
Oh, there you go. So maybe. Maybe kill this section then, because I, I kind of feel like these items are covered elsewhere.
If, yeah, I wouldn't have the second bullet if we're going to keep it. I don't have a problem getting rid of it because I don't think individual board members are supposed to be driving collaboration with our families.
Yeah.
That seems like it's a, a board totality issue as opposed to.
Okay.
A board member.
If you guys are, if you guys are in agreement and you feel like these ideas are kind of already covered elsewhere, I'll strike this section. That's why.
I, I have a, I have a suggestion because the next thing that we're going to look at, you called follow the chain of command. And I looked back at some of the other documents and I liked the wording one of the other districts had. It was called responding to concerns and complaints. And so it was a way, which is also kind of a procedure of how do you deal with families, community members.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was more specific of, uh, it's how you're responding to it.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to throw that out.
Are you suggesting that we go ahead and ax this piece of it, but then some of that idea, we capture it coming up?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we can come back to that. So follow the chain of command. And we actually, I didn't get too close into procedures on this because we have that trifold, that district trifold document that's available to communities and in our schools about how to handle concerns. Um, so I didn't go into too much detail. So while the board is eager to listen to its constituents and staff, inquiries will be forwarded to the superintendent for follow-up by the person who can properly and expeditiously address the issue. And we will encourage others to follow our procedures. That's that trifold I was just mentioning for issue resolution. And when we hear concerns, we will suspend final judgment, recognizing that we may not have a complete picture.
And, and that's why I really liked the, the wording where it said responding to complaints and concerns. Because it wasn't just, you know, chain of command. It was actually telling you what this was concerning.
So should we rename this then?
That was my opinion. I don't know about anybody else.
I'd be fine with that. Responding to concerns.
Yeah, just call it concerns.
Thoughts, Melissa?
I think that fits nicely practically.
And if, if you wanted to throw in the thing about collaborating or listening to other viewpoints, you could throw it in there.
I don't think it really fits there.
Okay. I think, I think it's kind of covered here, you know, like we may not have all the viewpoints, for example.
Okay, and, and just as a, are, is it really concerns or is this responding to community correspondence? I mean, because this is beyond concerned, right? If, if somebody were to shoot you an email saying, I think everything is, is great. You guys are doing a massive job, we would forward that.
I like that.
Yeah, or here's an idea.
Good idea.
Okay, so responding to community input?
That's, yeah, community input. That's good.
Was there another idea there?
Nope. I like that. Great.
Okay.
Oh, because you know, I wrote down Wazda called it dealing with citizens and parents. So, yep, there we go.
Yeah, actually, I've got, I've, there's a bunch of leadership training that you're not, you don't deal with people.
No, I know. And I'm just saying, I like this wording better than.
Cool. All right. Um, so this is all about, I felt, I found, I found it kind of odd that in their principles, they had lots to say about what the superintendent's job is. And I didn't think that was an appropriate place. So I came up with this idea of board superintendent cooperation. Uh, board direction to the superintendent will come by way of an approved motion consensus or through the board president.
And I would, I would, the only amendment to that is it would still have to come through motion or consensus because even the board president's just one vote of five. So the superintendent takes direction from the board, not in the internal person. The board president is the spokesperson of the board so they can deliver the consensus or the motion to the superintendent. But the superintendent shouldn't be taking direction from the board president.
It should be from the board, the whole board.
So I think we're good with approved motion or consensus. And if you want the board president and communicated via the board president would be fine. But we already have it covered that he's the mouth of the board earlier.
I think we need something. An improved motion. Or. All right, something that will come by way of an improved motion. Consensus. And. Is this overkill?
No. It's a complete thought, so I think it's good.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I think what wouldn't be helpful, again, imagine a different board in place, is we were all giving Tony an implied direction that wasn't aligned. So.
And thankfully, we invite Dr. Potts to all of our meetings. So these are the direction when Stanley hits the gavel.
Yeah. Okay. Stanley, Tony. Are you guys okay with this?
I like it. Of course. Yep.
The superintendent is the CEO and will recommend items that go before the board.
Do we want to add the word operational items?
No, I think it could be anything. I, I want to.
Board can also recommend items that go, that come before the board.
Yeah.
We shouldn't probably be recommending operational items to come before us, but we should be, I mean, we might, as an example, we might, we have tabled the, the, um, it's the actual item from earlier about the self-assessment. But, you know, what, assuming things calm down, we'll likely request that that book be brought, we thought that.
Read the third one. What if we just kill this one?
Uh, or just leave it at chief executive officer.
Yeah, that's already established. I mean, that's not really adding anything we don't already know.
They're going to take it up.
Yeah, because I feel like the last one kind of covers, you know, we talk and we agree on agenda items.
Oh, yeah. You're right. This next bullet's much better.
Okay. Yeah, and I think it's important that we meet regularly and we discuss these things. And from that, the agenda items, and also from our calendar and when Bonnie assigns us to do stuff and that kind of thing, too. But this establishes that conversations happen regularly and that's important.
Should there be a hyphen between board and superintendent at the top?
Yep. I'll give you that one because I thought about that and just gave up. There we go.
Thank you. I feel, I feel old.
Once an English teacher, always an English teacher.
Yes. I don't know if I told you my grandma was an English teacher and she had really long fingernails and would poke my sister and I when we got something wrong. And she'd keep at it until we corrected it. So that's how, yeah, once an English teacher, always an English teacher. Absolutely. Okay, I think we're getting close, you guys. You've been a champ. Um, this is about communication between the board and cabinet and staff. Hey, Tony, I'm going to put a hyphen in here. And, uh, so communication between staff is encouraged. Look, there's a big capital B, too. You can tell I was inconsistent. Um, board is encouraged. Any request will be directed to the superintendent and the board will promote safe, candid, open communication with staff. I think I went a little freelance on that one. I don't know if I saw that in the previous input, but that was something that we have valued as a board, especially when we're talking about school improvement plans. So I thought it would be good to memorialize that. Um, board members will notify the superintendent and building administrators prior to visiting school sites for board purposes.
Okay, I, I have a question on the first bullet. And Tony, this is certainly not directed at you, but since you're, you're moving on at some point. I don't think we can say any regret, any request should be directed to the superintendent because I would imagine that if a staff member were to contact us and say they were being harassed or, or sexually abused by the superintendent, we would not direct that request back to the superintendent.
And I have to agree 100% with George on that one.
Yeah.
I, yes.
Should we say?
That we don't want.
All appropriate requests back? I don't know. I don't.
If we just say requests, to start with requests, then that gives us a little discretion.
Yeah, because it's technically not a request, it's a complaint.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Decide how to handle a complaint.
Yeah. That was a good catch, George. Thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay, moving on. Guys, that's the last one. Okay, so first, thanks for participating in community riding. That's always kind of tough. And it's late, it's quarter to eight. So my marching orders in, beyond just getting this formatted is to add the chart about who does what and to make sure I capitalize board and district throughout. And that's all.
You're well done. Good job.
And to bring the agenda item as a votable item at some point in the future.
I don't know, do we have to vote on this?
Normally you would commit with a vote.
Yeah, you would have to vote on it to make it, make it, make it something we all agree upon. I think it's a good idea to bring it up for a vote.
Okay, so when this is, um, final, like I get the edits made and stuff, then I'm just going to package it up and send it to Bonnie and then ask her, or, or Stanley, would you prefer I sent it to you?
Just say to me that I'll send to Bonnie and we'll just, and, and go over it and.
We'll do like a first reading, second reading approval thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
Send to me and Bonnie and we'll go over it and we'll, we'll do a first read and then we'll second, on the second read, we'll vote.
Good job.
Great job.
Awesome. All right, guys. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
Kudos, Carrie. I was looking at all those documents.
Very well done, Carrie.
I never wanted to do it the way you did it, so very, very good. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Hendrickson, my fifth grade teacher gets the credit. That method has gotten me through term papers, thesis, you name it.
BS has gotten me through all those things.
For the next one, agenda is board comments. The first comment, thank you, Carrie, for doing an excellent job. I knew you.
Oh, thanks.
Yes.
Go back to sentences.
Yeah, I, I have a comment, but I will defer to anybody else who wants to go first.
I already clapped.
Go ahead, George.
Okay, so my, my kids started Ames web testing today.
Hmm.
And it occurred to me since historically Ames web testing has been used to determine what level of intervention we need um, amongst the littles and the middle school kids. And it occurs to me that this year's testing, given our long hiatus last spring, we may see some significantly lower than normal scores among the littles and maybe even the middle school. I would hope less so among the middle schoolers. But, yeah, the one question that I would end up asking, I'll probably shoot an email to Tony is just once, how long is it going to take to start getting those scores? And then what, uh, yeah, how long for a plan to be put together if there is going to be a, a larger intervention necessary than normal?
Well.
So I'm, I'm going to be working, I'm going to be working over the next, uh, couple of weeks with our principals on, uh, formulating, uh, a draft of school improvement plans. And, um, that will be presented to the board in November, um, and for feedback from the board. Uh, there's going to be ample opportunity, uh, between the board and principals to see some drafts of what they have as some preliminary school improvement plans because they've just been inundated with plant, what? Go ahead.
Question on that, though. Um, I thought the school improvement plan was based on a different test.
No.
I thought that was based on a different state test and Ames was used internally to identify.
I am, I am not aware of that. Uh, I'm not aware of, of the school improvement plans to be based on any specific test.
Okay, and the only reason I ask that is because I believe during Steve's presentation, he named the test started with an S and it was.
Yeah.
It was a smarter ballot. It's, it's, it's the state test.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'm not sure that the results on Ames web. I, it would be great if those were also used on our school improvement plan, but we, that's not the test that was named.
Well.
Okay, well, let me, let me follow up on that, George. I'll be speaking with, with Steve tomorrow. We're going to be meeting with the principals uh, on that exact, uh, uh, school improvement plan process.
I have two concerns that I wanted to dovetail that I know, Tony, you've already heard this one from me before. Ames web i- is not normed to be given via computers. So you have to remember that data is, um, there's going to be a lot of, uh, uh, error in that. And I've heard from intervention teachers that there, that there's a lot of parent involvement at times with some of the Ames web testing via the computer. So I'm just throwing in my two cents about how much we want to make our decision based on, on that, for those two reasons.
Well, we will have, uh, some thorough conversations at the November meeting, uh, when those, uh, plans are presented from board input.
Tony, can I, can I make a request? I, I think when I've looked at school improvement plans in the past and then we, we use the. and then we use the testing as the metric or, you know, the numbers that we're looking for, sometimes there's multiple tests, and I don't know, does one carry more weight than the other? And is SBA more important than Ames Web? And I feel maybe in the plan, when they presented, they could explain why they picked a particular test over the others.
Okay.
Even though my kids have participated in them, it all blends together and it feels like we test all year long, so...
Okay. We'll address that issue.
Okay. And I had one more. I had another comment. I got to sit in on the task force meeting last night, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that the staff continues to have around, you know, figuring out how this can work. My question for you is, originally, the task force prepared a plan, and now we've got new ideas and kind of new plans. And at what point are you going to update that document or replace that document? Because at some point, we are going to open, and so what is our plan? And I think the, I feel like we don't have a plan, and that's not true, so...
Well, we have a plan.
Right.
We have a plan, but Dr. Chen is making a decision on Monday, the 26th, that we don't know what the outcome of that decision will be and how various districts will respond. So Carrie, not to be quick about it, it's, we've got to, you've heard this term a lot, I know lately, but we've got to be nimble, because conditions are changing for us.
Yeah.
And how we're going about our business, in some school districts, they're picking months and weeks within those months as to the dates that they return grade levels of students at various points. We have avoided doing that, so that we're not causing people to go back and forth. So, you know, we, it, the, our front is changing all the time. And I can't say that we have a plan other than we are desperately looking for the infections to decline and assess it on a weekly basis. Thursday, we're meeting with the coaches to talk about how we can engage our student athletes and talk to, we had a meeting today with principals and Marty Parkhurst in preparation for that meeting tomorrow. They're, you know, everyone's really excited about getting into pods, like some school districts are alleged to have started already and others have not started, like us. So I will have more information for you after tomorrow's meeting with regard to athletics. I don't have any more information on the plan, because we're awaiting Dr. Chen's decision on Monday. He may be invited, he may be invited to the Pierce County Superintendent's meeting tomorrow that is taking place. So if I do hear from him in advance of Monday, I'll share it with the board.
Okay, and just to be clear, I appreciate that we haven't picked a date out in January. I'm looking for, what I am looking for is more of, when we start this phasing-in process, how is it going to work? How are we going to get kids into the buildings? How are they going to be organized in pods or small groups to prevent cross-contamination? And, you know, I'm looking for that kind of plan, so that as we continue to look at this week by week by week by week, we don't get to a point where, hey, it looks like in two weeks, we might have a safe window and we got to write this plan. Like, I would like to have some more structure in place.
Well, Carrie, that was a point of our discussion in cabinet the other day. We said, "Look, folks, we can't be caught unprepared", because when this, when the infections decline to an attractive point where we want to bring groups of students back, our plan must be ready and ready to go. We cannot tell the board, "Yeah, we've been given the green light, but we're not ready."
Right.
Oh, no. So I assure you...
Like, I'm excited. It made me, like, I was, I loved that we were kind of pinging off the primary kids and their need to go back, you know, four days a week for a half-day. And then to hear Cliff say, "That's not going to work for secondary", I'm like, whoa, there's so many moving parts. Like, I would like us to say, "Okay, this is what we're going to go with, even if we have to improve it at some point", so that we can start planning.
And Carrie, we're not there yet. And I heard the superintendent from Highline, Susan Enfield, today, make a comment that just shocked everyone. And she said, "My staff is in no position to begin implementing an AB program at the secondary level. I'm afraid they're going to crack." I'm afraid they're going to crack. And she said, "We are looking at the possibility in order to avoid fracture of staff to stay in remote learning all year long, because the AB schedule is so complicated." Now, I'm not saying we're going to dovetail on that, but I am going to pay really close attention to what our plan looks like. And at the secondary level, I have to tell you, it's going to be complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
There's no question.
It's going to be complicated to execute.
Yep.
So more to follow. Thank you for the tap on the shoulder. I know the entire board is interested in hearing those plans, and that will be forthcoming.
Okay.
I have one more comment, just as a format. I noticed our little record icon's on. I think it's great that we're recording these meetings. However, we should start every meeting by announcing the meetings being recorded.
Oh, yeah. We can task Bonnie with that. She's done that before.
We did that last night with the task force. And we certainly can easily do that here. Okay. Consider it done.
Any other questions?
Any more comments?
Good night, everybody.
All right, you're joining me there, 7:59 PM. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Great meeting.
Thank you. Great job, Carrie.
Thanks.